Speaking of that conservation bond, you recently announced the second conservation bond asking for $30 million. Currently, property owners are paying about $10 for $100,000 of property value. When and if it passes, if and when it passes, the first property year owners will pay about $15 for $100,000. I understand that's going to fluctuate. But do you tell us what, do you support the bond proposal? What would you do to help it pass? And what kind of projects are the best use of the money? We'll start with Mandy.
It's kind of interesting that you bring up housing tax costs in the question because as that would fund it, I'm also really interested in the idea of combining. I do support the bond, first off. I do support it. And I would do a lot of outreach to community members to explain the benefit of it and why I think that they should vote for it. But also, I'm really interested in the idea of combining that funding with the IRA. Because if it is used for an affordable housing project that meets certain requirements for environmental sustainability and for labor, then we actually can get most of that money back at the end of the tax cycle and reinvest it into ongoing projects and create a fund for our environment that is kind of like our community housing funds that reinvest their own money.
Yes, I support the bond. And it from just having a meeting and what we passed on last week was $5 per 100,000. What would we do to help it pass? I would continue to just reach out to people because I've been questioned. I had a question just on Saturday at the farmer's market, like, why would you pass this bond and not a county jail when we need a county jail? And you're asking for a bond? So these are things that the public need to know. I know that we're reaching back from 2008 when this all started. So as the funds is running out, they have literally, looking at the $30,000, it's $17, I mean, it's 30 million. $17 million is from grants. So it isn't all just, all money, money has been raised for this. And yes, I do support it.
I also support this bond. I was pretty excited to announce the rollout of that this past week. The main purpose of the bond is so that we can acquire lands and have areas where we can do projects that will increase the soil health, the water quality, the air quality, protect certain habitats, and create more. A few of the past projects that have been done with the last bond have done just that. Cedar River Crossing near Sutliff, what was formerly farmland, has a wetland that is there. And it's a great place when the birds are migrating to come in and see especially waterfowl and a variety of them. And that was like, there was a channel cut from the farm that was dumping into the river. So now that is not that way anymore. So it has done what we intended it to do. There are other areas that have been acquired that have very particular flora that has been protected. And at Kent Park, the increase of prairies has increased the soil health and therefore the water health. So I am very much in support of this.
Yes, I'm very much in support of the bond. As I mentioned, I think earlier, I was the person to either blame or give credit to for the first one. I sat down with our former conservation director, Harry Graves, at the Hamburg Inn in 2006. And we said, what can we do here? And I said, let's just bond for it, Harry. And the rest was history. But we literally on the back of a napkin sketched out how much money we thought we might need and what we could do with it. And I think the results have been really true to that original meeting. Harry said, you know, and he's the expert, I mean, he's the conservation director at the time. He said, there are, there are lands in this county that if we don't protect them now, they're never, they're going to go away and they will never be replaced. There are unique features in some places. And so that's what we focused on, is trying to protect those unique features that don't exist anyplace else, maybe in the county, maybe in this part of the state. And so we try to protect those. We've also done a lot with trails. We've done a lot with trying to create corridors for wildlife, to buffer already existing large wildlife areas. And I'm really excited about the potential for another conservation bond.
All right. Well, I appreciate conservation a lot. And I look back at our family farm. We had ground that was actually called sod busting ground, which means it never had been turned over. And so I think having ground that you can protect like that, that buffers creeks, it buffers stuff like that is very important. I think when you look at Johnson County, they are a leader in conservation areas. When you look at the parks that are out there, you look at the trails that we have and stuff like that, that didn't happen by chance. So that happens through bonds like this. I've been talking to several different people just about this kind of stuff. One thing I think we need to do, some complaints I've heard, is we haven't been taking care of the parks we have, to make them better, to keep, I'm hearing about poison ivy on trails and stuff like that. So if we can use part of this bond to help take care of the stuff we already have, make it better and improve that besides purchasing other ground, I think that's very important. Talking to people about transparency, I think it's very important that we try and identify properties, just not buy stuff without talking to the public first and getting public input is huge, right? So they're going to support what they're part of and what they've been asked about. So I think transparency is great with these projects. I think, you know, we don't want to have more loss of trust in politics, so.
Okay, thank you. The Inflation Reduction Act has created multiple tax credits for electrifying residential homes. Tax credits are sometimes out of reach for middle and lower, and lower income households. But the IRA also provides states with money to provide point of sale rebates for many of the same purchases and projects. For example, $840 for an electric stove, $1,750 for a heat pump water heater, and $8,000 for a heat pump for HVAC system. But the state of Iowa is dragging its feet and not made these available yet. Do you see ways that the county can piggyback on this federal electrification program through additional financial incentives or changing construction codes to require more electric appliances as other cities and counties across America have done?
I'm trying to remember all the different pieces of that question, because there were multiple pieces. But I do support regulations requiring that any new developments are environmentally up to par. And also, not only incentivizing developers but, and homeowners that live in their homes, but also incentivizing landlords is going to be an important piece of this. Because a lot of the landlords in Johnson County will replace appliances with whatever the cheapest appliance that they can get is. And a lot of the homes in Johnson County are rental homes. So we really have to be considering the landlords when we are talking about these things as well. And then also, yes, anything that we can do to incentivize people is always good. But also, we can also reach out to other counties. And we can ask other counties to make statements to the state with us as far as those federal dollars that are not being made available to us due to the state. There's a lot of state level advocacy that can be done, especially in partnership with other large counties.
The National CCR Club has significantly increased its focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, especially since Me Too and Black Lives Matter. Iowa City, Johnson County, and the state of Iowa have wrestled with its own human rights concerns regarding the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, LGBTQ+ rights, indigenous and immigrant rights, the Excluded Workers Fund, and most recently, the formation of the Transgender Advisory Board. With all those things in mind, the question is, is the county doing enough to promote and protect civil and human rights, especially for those in protected classes? And if not, what more can or should the county do?
I do not think that the county is doing everything that it could be doing to protect civil rights in the increasingly authoritarian state that we are living in at this point in time. There's currently a lawsuit that is against the state for the anti-immigration, well, there are multiple lawsuits against the state for the anti-immigration legislation that was just passed. Johnson County could join that lawsuit. That is something that we could be discussing with our legal team. Also, I am a member of the newly formed Johnson County Advisory Task Force. I'm really excited about the work that's going to be done there. I was also part of the Excluded Worker Fund organizers. I worked through my role as the founder and director of Corridor Community Action Network very closely with Catholic Worker House during that time, and advocated very strongly for that. I believe Roseanne Porter and Lisa Green Douglas both voted against that excluded worker fund. But yeah, I think that there is a lot of state level advocacy in particular that we can be doing, and a lot that we can be doing to ensure that our residents are protected regardless of what's happening at the state to the best of our ability.
Yeah, I, just that, pointing out, thank you very much, Mandy, that we didn't vote for the, the, what did you call it?
The Excluded Worker.
The Excluded Workers Fund. Okay, so just going back a little bit, I want to say that there was always this idea that there was such a fund. This, I was on the initial ARPA leadership team where we were just processing the rules that were coming out from the US Treasury that were changing constantly and trying to see what are allowable areas. And in fact, if we had done just excluded workers, there would have been, you can't give the money directly to the workers, you would have to give it to their employer by law, by the guidelines of the US Treasury. And that is why we didn't make that the gateway entry point for those monies. Instead, you can do qualified census tract type gateway question. So we did it based on income. And the margin that we used for that, in fact, was, it included many, many excluded workers. But to talk about, we voted against an excluded workers fund, there was no such fund. I mean, there might have been people who were excluded workers, but there was no pot of money that was an excluded workers fund. We had to work within the constraints of the law, and we did that. And by doing what, doing it the way we did, we made it very ample and included.
Are there, are there further, further comments?
Absolutely. She made the statement that us two voted against it. There wasn't an against, it was with the ARPA dollars that we used. And this was during the pandemic. During the pandemic, we had a lot of people that was affected, not just excluded workers. And when the excluded workers or you and the Catholic workers came to us, you were literally demanding us to give money to excluded workers only, when we had a whole county of people who were in need. And that's who we gave the money to. And in order for you to be able to get that $1,400 that we gave out, you had to qualify.
Yes, and that lottery allowed folks who had already received pandemic emergency assistance from the federal government to receive it instead of making sure that it went to folks who had not already received federal assistance money for the pandemic from the federal government. The point of the proposed, yes, I know there wasn't one, that's why I said voted against creating one. And the point of the proposed Excluded Workers Fund was to ensure that those who had not already received assistance for the pandemic from the government had access to some.
And while that might be true, there were, oh gosh, I better, I better stop.
Any further comments?
Confined animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, as they're often called, and ethanol production in Iowa can be seen as only marginally reducing carbon at best, but bringing significant damage to our public health, especially in higher cancer rates. Many controls over these industries have been taken away from the county. But regardless of jurisdiction, what stand do you take to stop the state from being strangled by these industries? What ideas do you have for what the county can do to promote clean water, clean air, and decreasing carbon emissions?
I'm a member of Iowa CCR largely because of their work against CAFOs and pipelines and things like that. I attend every one of their events that I'm able to. I'm really glad that they recently started a Southeast Iowa group. I do support a factory farm moratorium. I think that that's something that the county should, again, make statements to the state about. And I think that the quickest way for us to reduce our carbon emissions would be to get our five coal plants closed, well, five owned by Mid-America and then one owned by the University of Iowa, which again, is out of the jurisdiction of the county, but that does not mean that the county, particularly with Mid-America as one of the largest users of Mid-American energy, cannot create pressure and influence to get those coal plants closed.
I would say one thing, come back to the CAFOs conversation, is about, you can vote with your pocketbook, right? When you look at where you're buying your products, your meat products, whatever you choose to eat, you, as a young kid, I watched a buying station in a small town, in a small town locker, close up because all the big companies were coming in, right? The big companies are the ones behind all the CAFOs. So don't forget, you can vote with your pocketbook. You can buy, if it says something on there that you don't like, whatever brand it is, that big one you see in the meat case, maybe look for the one that's locally sourced. Look for the one that comes from somewhere, like, we had great belted gallois up in Solon, speaking of Solon, and Greg Hippel raises those, and he was supplying them to the salt fork in Solon. I mean, that, that kind of stuff right there, don't forget you have that power, so.
I do just want to point out that that is a power that is dependent on your pocketbook. Having the ability to vote with your pocketbook is dependent on your pocketbook. Because of our factory farm problem, there are large markups. Well, it's not that the local food isn't marked up, the factory farm food is able to be a lot cheaper because of the way that they produce it, and it's unhealthy and it's problematic in a lot of ways. But it also does mean not everybody can afford to buy the local steak from a manna that costs twice as much as what's on the high V shelf. So we can't just necessarily leave that up to consumers and residents to pressure companies.
The salary of the county supervisor is approximately $90,000. Is that sufficient for you to devote 100% of your working time to the duties of a supervisor and prevent you from needing to take a second job and likely creating extra work for other supervisors?
Yes, that's your turn.
Mandy? I'm currently raising my three children on $55,000 a year from my 40-hour-a-week job. So yes, absolutely, I would be putting at least 40 hours a week into this job with no problem on that salary.
Yep, I make the $90,000, and plus, I've also opened up a restaurant. But I do want to say that the work that I do, you can't even tell me the work that I do in my community. If you're not there to see what I'm doing, you can't say what I'm accountable for, you can't say where I'm at. I don't go into the office and sit 40 hours a week. I don't have to because I'm wanted in the community. I do my work out in the community. I collaborate, I partnership, I'm a part of Think Iowa City, Better Together 2030. I serve on the judicial, six judicial courts. I am everywhere. And when I'm not, when I'm not visible, I can tell you where I am. I've been hearing people say, I'm not at work and I'm missing work. When I'm missing work, I want you to know that I'm out in Washington DC in February at state legislative conferences. I serve on the steering committee, I'm, I am the vice chair out for NACO, National Association of Counties Officials. And so every February, I go out there and I am on the policy and steering committee. I serve as vice chair on the community workforce and economic development. I also serve as, out there in Washington DC, on the housing. So all the housing issues here, I go out there and learn, and I'm able to bring it back. So a lot of times, I know that in the community, there has been this question that, it's mainly been aimed at me, Supervisor Porter, and I'm happy to stand here and tell you what I do. I work. I do a lot in this community. I'm called on for everything. Even if somebody die, I don't care, black, white, whatever, they call me, I am there. I, absolutely. They know what I do. The proof is in the pudding. Thank you.
Okay, so the question I, I think was, is, is that salary enough for us to, to do our job? Yes, it is. I, I'll say something that, when I first decided that I was going to throw my hat into the ring and run, I talked to different supervisors, and every one of them told me something different about the job in terms of the number of hours that it required. And I was told by two that it was a full-time, 40-hour-a-week job. And then I was told by the other three that it was three-quarters time. And Rod and I have actually disagreed on this. But I will say this, when we get our paycheck and it's for two weeks, it says for 60 hours. So that's, that's, you know, instead of 80, so that's three-quarters time. So we are compensated at that. We are able to schedule our time outside of our meetings as we are needed and where we are needed, as Roseanne pointed out. And so sometimes you come in, we're not right there. But we're, we're off doing our work. So yes, it's enough. Oh, but I also heard, Mandy, you, you did say.
Am I up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I was a social worker before I got this job, so it's plenty of money. But, but, but I, I do want to say, I mean, I've been doing this job for a while, and I have served with a number of people. And everybody has a little bit different way of doing the job. Everybody sees different things that they feel are important, and they kind of do that. And actually, that's why when you have five people, it's a good mix, because hopefully you cover everything in that way. I do think there are, you know, the public needs to ask people what they do, and they need to, and you need to tell people what you think we should do. And basically, you're, you're the decision makers, you're the people that decide if supervisors are doing the right things or not. So you tell us what you think we ought to be doing, you know? I, I have kept track of my own time for a while. I did a little time study for a couple months. I always work a little bit over 40 hours a week. That's just how it turns out. I don't think that's excessive. I know a lot of people who, who work harder than that. I like what I do, so sometimes it doesn't feel like work, sometimes it feels pretty darn hard. Just depends on, on what you're up to. But I really feel like the public needs to pay attention and decide if you think we're spending our time and energy in the way that you feel we should spend it.
So accuracy and transparency, in '25, if I read the budget right, it's actually going to go up to $99,000 for the board supervisor. I will tell you, I'm retiring for a reason. I planned on running for board supervisor 20 years ago when I was sitting on other boards, Real Housing Trust Fund here, and planning a zoning. I had saw then that I had an interest and desire then. So for me, I'm retiring to set myself up to be there full-time, to be there more than full-time. I do other stuff on the side and always have, some other different things, just, just to make, you know, that advance, to learn something. I'm a 60-hour, at least a week employee, maybe 70. So for me, this is going to be pretty simple. I plan on, I'm kind of old school, I guess, if you ever hear about 100-day plan? So I've been talking to other departments in the county. I've been asking, what do you need? What do you not need? I've been getting to understand the county deeper dive now that I'm getting to that point. And with that, I plan on going in every one of those departments, spending time in those departments, seeing what they need and seeing what they don't need. There's obviously different things in those departments that I don't understand unless I'm sitting behind that counter and talking to people and learning and watching and listening and asking questions. So I honestly, I have no problem for the four years, if I get in saying, I don't need a raise all four years, you can give me a reduction, I will still run. If you want to make it $50,000, this isn't about the money for me, this is about serving the people. I have no problem, and you can write this down, 50 grand, I will still do this job.
Lisa, do you have a?
Yeah, well, my rebuttal then will go both to Bob and Mandy. Because Mandy, in the earlier forum, you said something about you would not take any raise, or you didn't need a raise or something. And, and Bob, you just said that you would go down to $50, so.
$50,000.
$50,000, yeah, $50,000.
You know what, $50,000, that might be a little cover. Just gas, at least.
You can have your standards, right. But, so I would be happy to help you both identify a local nonprofit to give the access to. Just because we're doing a job that we are the ones that are required to vote on salaries, because we have to vote on everyone's salary, but the state code requires us to pull ours out and vote on it separately, doesn't mean that, oh, okay, well, now it's embarrassing, we shouldn't get a raise. And that has happened the last two years where, oh, well, let's do this so that we can tell our, come on, we do the work and we deserve a cost of living raise, just like all of our employees deserve a cost of living raise. So I've said it, I said it out loud, and I, I stand by it.
And I'll say, I've been advocating on behalf, I've literally been doing the work of advocating on behalf of mental health, affordable housing, veteran affairs, our youth in the community for over 20 years. And I'm gonna tell you now, I was doing it when I wasn't getting paid. I wasn't getting a dollar. So I'm proud to be getting paid on what I do. I'm still doing what I do. And I did it when I wasn't getting paid. So I'm cool with whatever, however you feel, if you feel that you won't take a raise, I'm happy to get a raise, I'm happy. I was born and raised in the projects of Second Ave, Michigan, and if you know where I come from and where I am now, I am very proud. So yes, I'm, I'm happy with the salary.
And I want to just kind of put this, because you had put a challenge out recently about tracking our time and stuff. I actually did that the first year that I was on the board because I was curious, since each supervisor had told me something different, and the compensation board had just recently come up with a plan to bring us up to three-quarters of the pay of the auditor, treasurer, and recorder. And so I thought, well, I wonder, you know, how much time I am putting in. So I tracked it. And I tracked it for the first year. And there were some weeks where it was under 40 hours a week, and there were some weeks where it was over 40 hours a week. But on average, it was 88% time, which is more than the 75% time that, for which we're compensated. And it's less than 100% time that, you know, some are saying that the job is. And then I did it a few years in, and it was right around 88% again. You have to do it over enough time because you're going to have those weeks. During budget season, oh my gosh, you know, we're there all the time. We may as well just pack up, you know, a cot and sleep at the building. But, you know, and then there are times where it kind of trickles down. But it has been pretty consistent for me to come out to 88% time.
Iowa City and Johnson County residents have had concerns about policing and prosecution policy even before Black Lives Matter and since Black Lives Matter, continuing to this day. Recently, since in that time period, state and local police have used tear gas against protesters in 2020. County sheriff's office acquired and continues to keep an MRAP military vehicle. Seven protesters, all transgender, were arrested last fall and charged by the county attorney. The county attorney's office is promoting a community violence intervention program using ARPA funds, and there's differing opinions about that program. So taking all of those into consideration, do you approve of these or any other policing and prosecution tactics that you can think of? Do you approve of those? And if not, are there other policies you would promote as a supervisor?
With, you mentioned the protesters. When you, when it comes to protesting, I know as a protester, as an organizer, that disobedience, civil, what is it, civil disobedience. We plan, there's strategic planning to protesting. And I feel like you have to be educated, and if you don't know, you don't know. I feel like as a, as a Teamster organizer, with the civil disobedience, we know that if anybody crossed that line, we know it's already set in, in stone, somebody's going to jail. We know this. This is, it's all part of a setup. But with this, that has happened with these transgender protesters, I definitely was not going to go against our county attorney because I didn't feel like she was responsible for what had happened to them. So that's my opinion. I'll come back later with the rebuttal.
Can you tell me what the actual question is again? You can shake your head, Tom, but you know, you've got this long preamble, so.
And Lisa, I do want to warn you, you've been talking a lot on the rebuttal, and I would ask you to.
Okay.
Make it more, more concise.
Okay.
So I sit on the central committee for the Johnson County Democrats, and in my position there, there was a censuring of the county attorney. And just, everybody understands exactly what was going on there, because there was a protest. My understanding, I wasn't there, but the road was being blocked. No one was arrested at that time. And Rachel Zimmerman was posed with the question of what do we do here? And, and so she said, you know, anybody else that would do that, we would end up having charges against them. So that's what ended up happening. So they came in and they wanted to remove her from office. And by censuring is how I look at that. And maybe I'm over-exaggerating, but that's kind of what was looked at. I voted no for that censuring, and the reason I voted no for that censuring was she was being fair and impartial. I will always support the right to peacefully protest in this county, always support that right. And, and so, you know, she has a job to do. For me to be a board supervisor, to tell her she's not going to do it anymore, she didn't do it the way I liked, is wrong. And so that's why I stood up for Rachel Zimmerman in that case. And I mean, I guess I reached out to one of the leaders also in the community that was involved in that protest, and asked her, I said, how can we do this together? How can you peacefully protest and law enforcement not get involved? She still hasn't got back to me on that. But it's a genuine conversation, and I'm not going to leave that conversation, I'm going to come back to it. So I, I think there's a way of, of working out that, so.
I want to start by saying, when I'm answering safety questions, I am answering them as a domestic. domestic violence survivor, as the parent of trans youth, and as a person who is finishing a four-year term on the Iowa City Community Police Review Board. And on that four-year term of the Iowa City Community Police Review Board, my next meeting is literally in about two, or my last meeting is about two weeks, I presided as chair over the investigation of the tear gassing. And I watched hours and hours and hours of every angle of body cam and dash cam that was available of that incident over the course of months. I read a hundreds-page report by the IOR, OIR group about that incident. I listened to officers say things like, oh, look at that, cool. So I definitely am proud to say that I had a hand in getting the, with, you know, Chief Liston did agree to this change. The code for Iowa City Police Department does now require their duty to intervene extends to other agencies. That was a very complicated situation with a lot of agencies involved. And so now they do, are required to intervene if there's excessive force by another agency. So I'm also on the Central Committee, and I was also at that meeting that day regarding the censor. And first, I want to say, a censor is just a statement. Neither the Johnson County Central Committee or the Johnson County Board of Supervisors has the ability to remove the county attorney from office. That is an elected position, as Rod said. So, so the censor was just a statement. That's all that that was. And it's not true that that was, that anybody else doing the same thing would have been arrested, because there were hundreds of other people doing the same thing that very day. And the only folks who were targeted and arrested from video surveillance after the fact were trans folks. Also, when we talk about how a county attorney does their job, we can look at the Iowa County Attorney prosecutorial standards, which are what define what the county attorney's job is. And those standards very clearly say multiple times that the county attorney has complete discretion. They can know that somebody broke the law and still choose not to charge them because they don't think that the law is just. This is an unconstitutional law that's being enforced in Johnson County.